Welcome everyone to the February 5th, 2014 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Mayor Tabke.
Here. Could we all stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, we have one that is related to the liaisons, and if you could add that, please, just, this relates to appointment of the Fire Relief Association.
Nine A.
Nine A will be fine.
Does that work? Anything else? I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Council Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Senator Lieutenant Counselor Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number four, consent business. Is there anything to remove from consent, or nothing, I guess, to add to consent this evening? Anyone?
Four, C and D. I'm gonna be consistent and vote against them, although it gives them a budget process.
Okay, four, C and D, pulled off. Anything else? All right, entertain a motion to...
Four, B, liaison appointments?
You're pulling that one off?
Yep.
Okay. All right, anything else? All right, entertain a motion to approve the consent business as amended. Counselor Lehman?
Motion to approve consent agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Lieutenant Counselor Luce, Mr. McNeil, could you please read the consent business?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, item four A, authorizes appropriate city officials to execute an accords agreement with Magellan Pipeline Company LP. Four B, approves job description for lead maintenance operator and lead mechanic in the Public Works Department. Four C and four D were removed from consent agenda. Four E, approves payment of bills, the electronic transfer is the amount of $4,529,639.40. Item four F, authorizes the execution of an intergovernmental grant agreement with the Shakopee Meadow Lockland Sioux Community, accepting a grant of up to $100,000 for the purposes of constructing the Quarry Lake Park Trail. And four G was removed from consent agenda.
Thanks, sir. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four C, did you want to discuss or just vote, Matt?
I just wasn't in favor of that in a budget process, and I'm gonna be consistent, so I'm sort of in favor of that position.
Okay, do we have a motion?
You said four C?
Four C, approval of position description for management intern. Counselor Whiting?
I'll make a motion to approve the position description for the management intern.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Senator Lieutenant Counselor Mokel, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes three to two with Counselors Lehman and Luce in dissent. Item four D, amendment to 2014 non-union pay plan. Same thing?
Same thing.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number seven, four, one, two, amending resolution seven, three, nine, three, a resolution adopting the 2014 pay plan for certain non-union employees of the City of Shakopee and move its adoption.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Lieutenant Counselor Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one with Counselor Lehman in dissent. Item four G, Counselor Lehman?
The tally, I was looking through it. Let's see here, I think we had two for Mr. Luce, is that correct?
I have three.
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 And I have eight, nine?
Seven.
Seven. Well, to make it a little more even, I was gonna see if he's interested in doing the transit.
Counselor Luce?
Which transit?
Suburban Transit Authority and Scott County Transit.
The two of them kind of go hand in hand.
Right.
I'll take them off your hands.
Okay. Any further discussion?
There's a question about the school board for Mr. Luce.
Okay, Mr. Luce?
I've stated this twice, both you and Mr. Whiting, and I was hoping to get someone to switch. This is a board that I don't relate to that well. I guess that's putting it the best way. So I think I'd be better served to do a different, different one, though, you know, I'm just looking at, someone may be switching.
Got it. And it is, we set it up differently this year, so I'm glad that we had the discussion at the last meeting for making this a little more thoughtful, how this happens. So I think that's a very good outcome for this, and it's intended to be a two-year term, and then things switch from there. And we don't have, I'm assuming that Spock is where you want to switch?
I would prefer that, yes. I think my interest would be better spent there.
Got it. Counselor Whiting was on school board for the last two years, and I think it's fair to switch it. And then we, in two years, or if something happens beforehand, we can switch at that point. But I definitely understand your concern on it, but I, you, as a, as a represent, as a liaison from council, you don't interact and have lots of discussion at the meetings for the most part. You go and you report back to council what, well, it's just a procedural thing. It's not a, not a have to put all of your interests and motives and time into things that, at school board, we need to know what's going on, and need to have a representative. And then we can switch it up in two years. So I don't know, Counselor Whiting?
Yeah, I, I would like to keep the Spock for this two-year cycle. You know, I've, in the past councils, we had less interest, so it seemed like I gathered up a few more liaisons and opportunities. But, you know, I've given up the school board, I've given up the chamber. We'll be rolling over the EDA here coming up tonight. The interview committee, I've given to, now to you guys. You know, and we had it as acting mayor when it first came out, and I didn't argue it, but I did understand that there's a seniority process that typically runs with that. So Mr. Lehman has taken that position, and that's, you know, the process that works, so we kind of go through that seniority level. And I mean, I'm, I'm fine with that. I graciously have given these up without any argument, but I do want to keep Spock.
Counselor Lehman?
Well, can anybody do a quick rundown here and see if there was, be a conflict between what I already have by trading the two transits for the school board? Be a two-for-one swap if I do the school board and Mike does the transit, but I, the question I have is, would I be conflicting with anything else?
I don't believe you would be. Why would you be?
Well, I mean, is there anything else I'm on that I can't make too many at the same time?
Oh, no, Monday nights.
School board is Monday?
Yep.
Derby Days is Thursday.
That's changing to, that maybe changed to a Monday night.
Right.
And I would gladly take Derby Days since I'm at the meetings anyway.
Well, I prefer to keep that one. I've been keeping up on it.
Don't worry about it. I'll stick with it.
Okay.
All right, so the changes that we've made are, Counselor Luce will take the Transit Review Board. Item number ten, item number eleven, Suburban Transit Authority Board of Directors. So those will be amended to Counselor Luce. Anything else? Do you want to go to school board, Matt, or?
No, I can, if I have a conflict, I'm gonna go with Derby Days. But I don't know if that's gonna happen yet. And I can show up at a school board anyway.
Right. And we can amend this. I mean, there's nothing to say that we can't amend this. We can find out, and if that makes sense, then we can amend it at the next meeting. It's not a problem.
And I may show up at a couple of the transportation ones, just because I've been involved in a lot of that, just to get Mike up to speed.
Yep. Anybody can show up at anything they want, so.
Yeah, I want to show up at the intergovernmental working, because I'd like to see how that works.
There we, if Brad and I are there, we're gonna have to post that in advance.
Just, and that's possible, just let us know.
Right.
All right, do we have a motion? Counselor Lehman?
Motion to approve the 2014 liaisons as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Lieutenant Counselor Luce, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone here this evening that would like to speak to city council? This is, just so everybody knows, is a different kind of meeting than we normally have. We've switched over starting in February to a first meeting in the month as a workshop-type meeting, second meeting as a regular city council meeting. So, but everyone is still welcome to come say hi if you want to. You don't have to, it's okay. All right, item...
Make her do it.
Yeah, exactly. I, I would, I would sign it twice if you came up to say hi. It's all right.
Get his banking signature.
All right, item number seven, recess for Economic Development Authority meeting. Do we have a motion to recess?
I make a motion to recess.
Counselor Mokel, do we have a second?
Second.
Senator Lieutenant Counselor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Whiting?
We'll call the February 5th, 2014 meeting of the Shakopee Economic Development Authority to order. Ms. Weckman, please make note of the roll.
Yes, Mr. President?
First item of business is the approval of the agenda. Looking for an emotion.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Mokel, seconded by Tabke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Item number three is the consent business. Two items on the consent business, the EDA bill list and the EDA minutes from January 21st. Oh, and it looks like elections is on the consent, but we'll...
No.
No.
Should not be.
Mr. Lehman?
Can I get a copy of the EDA bill list?
Ms. Lenahan, do you have a copy?
Most of $49.24, fifty-four cents.
Is there any questions about the EDA bill list?
I just didn't have one in my packet.
I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the consent items as presented. Mr. Lehman?
Motion to approve the consent items, and that would be three A, three B?
Correct. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Luce. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item of business is election of EDA officers. Mr. McNeil, do you want to present on this one?
President, we have had annually at the first meeting, the election of officers. We have listed for you the president, vice president, treasurer, and secretary for the past five years. Typically, the secretary position is that of the finance director. Treasurer, I don't know that there's actually any requirements other than just some statutory things you may have to sign. But I think the first thing to do would be to elect the president who can then run the rest of the meeting.
So open the floor for nominations for the position of president of Economic Development Authority. Mr. Tabke?
I nominate Matt Lehman. Counselor Lehman?
We have a nomination for Mr. Lehman. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Look for a motion to close the nominations and vote Mr. Le, Matt Lehman as chair of the Economic Development Authority.
I make a motion to close and vote for Lehman for president.
All right, all the, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations, Mr. Lehman. Do you accept?
I, yeah, I suppose.
After the vote is the time to ask.
You can take over the elections from here.
All right, election of vice president for the EDA. Any nominations for vice president to the EDA? Mr. Whiting?
I'll nominate Mr. Tabke, is that, we'll, sure, we'll allow Mr. Tabke.
Typically, the, the role of the mayor is to treasurer of the EDA.
Okay, I will nominate Ms. Mokel then, so I retract my first nomination.
Is there, is there a second to the motion? Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Last call, any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Whiting?
I'll move to close nominations and nom, elect...
Cast a white ballot.
Cast a white ballot for Ms. Mokel.
White ballot means that everybody's gonna vote in favor, basically. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Luce. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes.
You want to ask her if she accepts?
I would accept.
She, yeah, she accepts. Nominations for, for treasurer, and typically it's been the mayor filling that position, so I would look for a...
Make motion to nominate Mr. Tabke as treasurer of the EDA.
I second.
Here's a motion and a second. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Last call, any other nominations? Hearing none, Mr. Whiting?
I'll move to close nomination, cast a white ballot for Mr. Tabke as treasurer of the EDA.
Motion, white ballot, seconded by Mr. Luce. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. We have no other general business?
We have a secretary that we need to...
Sec, well, secretary is typically, right, okay. Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to elect Julie Lenahan, nominate her as secretary of the EDA.
I second that.
Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Last call, no other nominations? Motion and second for finance, finance director to be the secretary of the EDA. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. General business, we have none. Motion to adjourn to Tuesday, the 18th of February would be in order?
I make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February 18th.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Luce. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, President Lehman. We reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting at 7:20, and we moved our last item, number nine A, for fire relief. Mr. McNeil?
Mayor, also, we need to take some formal action regarding the Fire Relief Association that was not included in the memo that was discussed earlier on that. The, by state law and by the Relief Association bylaws, there'd need to be three, what we call municipal trustees or ex officio members, one of whom by state law needs to be the fire chief. You have a choice, however, on the other two. They can be both elected officials, or they can be one elected and one appointed official. Our recommendation would be that with Ms. Lenahan's expertise with fire relief associations, that she be one of your appointees, but that's up to you as to whether you want to do that or have two elected officials.
Counselor Lehman?
How critical is it that the fire chief is involved in this?
By state law, it's required.
Okay, so that's two. Okay.
Do you want to take one at a time?
No, just...
You want to just do a group?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what we can do, right, Mark?
Correct.
Yeah.
The, the choice is, do you want two elected officials, do you want an elected official and an appointed official?
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
Kathy had an interest in this. Do you, does she still have that interest?
Do you still have that interest?
I can work with Julie on that, so.
And just so everyone knows, I have hardly gone to any of these meetings the last two years. It's all been, Julie has done this, and, yeah. So I've had very little involvement, other than just knowing what's going on in the past, so.
So, let's see if I make this motion correctly.
Counselor Lehman?
The motion would be to appoint fire chief, finance director, and councilwoman Mokel.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Senator Lieutenant Counselor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we move on to item 10A, council February workshop for policy priority discussion. We kicked this off at the last city council meeting, and this, the goal of this is to get, go, get a, a couple and get started with very high-level overarching policy decisions for the City of Shakopee. And we'll let Ms. Lenahan take it from there.
Since we are starting a new process, where would you like me to sit and what works best for the campus? Right there, okay.
We got you covered from all angles.
Yeah, you cannot hide.
Learned that.
Just follow the money.
Mayor and members of the council and the viewing public, as the mayor has indicated, this is a, a new process, a new, a new program. And it's basically opening new ground, I think, as a whole for the council and the community. And as we discussed, establishing ways to do this and be most effective, as the mayor has indicated, one of the things that I think communities, councils, city staff, other intergovernmental units struggle a lot with is, is there a clear, defined, specific policy and a track of action that can be defined to the staff you're working with, to the other council members, to the other intergovernmental groups you're with? Has the council cohesively developed policies that can drive your budget decisions, your council actions, your community outcomes? Do you have a policy that can not just detail small tasks or specific actions? But will it give you the ability to prepare a budget? Will it give you the groundwork to make consistent council actions? Do you have the pieces in place that as a council, you all cohesively can answer where you think you want to see your community going? So as I've explained that, is this a, a clear guide? I'm gonna be asking your input a lot tonight, because it's very important that I don't want to put words in your mouth. I don't want to put things in front of you. It's very important that we get your input and your knowledge on your community. As I've talked to the mayor and Mr. McNeil, I've done this kind of work in other communities, and I was very pleased to be able to help with this. Because as a staff member, I kind of wear dual hats. And it's been interesting to me in Shakopee how articulate and very clearly defined people are on tasks. But I'm not always getting that message on overall policy. So I, as we started talking through this, we said, can we define those policies as a group? So that as we go to the next meeting, we're talking February 18th, that we've developed a couple of action items tonight, not tasks, policies, that you can start working toward as you are developing, you know, if you want to start with a two-year track, maybe bring it out to a three to five, but can you put those pieces in place?
And I should have said, when we got this started, that this is intended to be a free-wheeling discussion, and you don't need to be recognized to speak. And if things get out of hand, then I'll take control, because we have a, Counselor Whiting over there tends to be a little wordy upon occasion. But if, if that happens, then we'll, we'll cut that off. But for the most part, just speak and have an open conversation. The point of having this is so that everyone can, can discuss and talk and get as many ideas and concepts out there as a body that we can continue to work on and refine as we move forward and, and get some, some high-level policy statements out there for us to direct, give better direction to staff as to where we're going in the future and what everyone needs to focus their energy and time and money on.
So as we kind of roll down that road, are there any thoughts on just the initial points we took?
I'll try not to be wordy, but...
Good luck.
Policies and goals, a little different.
They are.
You want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. When you're developing a policy, it creates that framework for as decisions and community futures come to you. If you have a policy that you can look back on and say... Switch, I'm gonna switch gears here and grab a microphone. Because anyone who knows me knows I'm kind of a frustrated teacher. Can you hear me? Does that work? One of the things we started talking about when we were discussing, how are we going to, how are we going to define how to work with this tonight? We said, let's think through, if you want to develop a po, a policy, what are the factors? Does that work? Is this working out? I can't believe you can't hear me, Valerie. Okay, does that work? Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so, as we... Okay, so, as we talked about the methodology of how do you go about developing policies? How do you go about developing the criteria that you want to use as a guide for your community? Excuse me?
You, why don't you bring your chairs over here, where it's gonna be more functional this way, if we could?
One of the things we talked about is, starting with the, starting with the concept of, and this is, these are purely examples, these are just things to kinda get the ball rolling. A positive goal for Shakopee's future is, okay? This is kinda legwork on how you can work to get these pieces going. Followed by, and the council plan to implement this as a reality is, followed by, how do you prioritize future actions to accomplish a goal for a policy? This is just kinda the piece by piece, if you can break it down by statements, if you can break it down by action items. What are the things as a council that you want to see come about from these discussions? So based on just interjecting these common sense ideas, one of the things we hope to accomplish is not just a series of simple tasks, because as the policymakers of the city, you need to present and guide staff and community actions by the policies. So as I throw this out, give me your thoughts. I'll be glad to write pieces down, I will be glad to take your suggestions and comments.
Well, I'll throw some of my immediate thoughts out.
Uh-huh.
One is, it's hard pressed to pass a policy that, uh, or adopt a policy that binds future councils. So your, your window is limited. Um, as far as goals related to policies, we have a vision statement that spells out many of our goals that we, that we want to continuously try to achieve, that was made with many stakeholders besides just the council.
Can I interject? You made a very interesting statement. You have a vision statement that was created how many years ago?
Yep.
And then you are also mentioning, but do we wanna create something that holds future councils?
Correct.
So, y- y- do you feel that that mission statement that you currently have as a city is the mission statement you wanna continue?
Well, I think you actually raised a better point, because the vision statement is the I have the beholder. Your, your thought on one aspect of that may be different than mine. So, what you're really trying to get at is how do we get everybody on the same page when, when the item that they're trying to get on the same page of is different perceptions to each individual?
Exactly right.
So.
That's why it's extremely difficult to get everybody on the same page if you have very delineated, specific tasks. But if you have an, have an overarching belief or a philosophy that you think is critical to the future positive environment of Shakopee, how do you get that? What are those factors that you, as a council, feel are critical to the future of this community?
Taxes.
Again, might be a little bit more task-based rather than policy.
I, I grew up in downtown. I've got a fondness for the downtown area. It's having troubles. I would like to see it revitalized. I'd like to see some kind of a plan, and I guess with this one or one corridor plan, we're gonna see something coming up, you know, in the near future. Um, I really think as part of the downtown deal, the railroad has to come into play. We have to do something with the noise levels. Um, I've had some information given to me. This is a very expensive proposition, and it's gonna take years to do, so the faster we get started on it and make a decision as to if we're gonna spend the money or not, uh, cause if we're not gonna spend the money on getting a quiet zone, and we might as well forget about the downtown, because it's just not gonna work with the railroad making the noise it's making.
So if you were going to look at, and tell me if you can't hear me, I'll keep moving things around. If you were looking as a goal, you mentioned that one component of a, of a project is the railroad, which is part of another project, which is your downtown. What is it ultimately that you think needs to be addressed?
Well, it's also a part of just normal living in Shakopee. The railroad noise carries, I would say, three quarters of the town. I live nine blocks away from, well, seven blocks away from the railroad. It wakes me up in the summer if I have a window open. If, even in the winter now, I can hear it with the windows closed and everything quiet. Um, you can still hear it, so.
I think it also affects some of the economic development of the downtown. The businesses wanting to come in.
So would this be, if you had to put it broader, quality of life issue related to?
Livable and workable community in the downtown area.
Am, am I correct, am I defining this right, quality of life?
Yes.
Okay. Feel free, feel free to interject if I'm not getting these right. Quality of life and.
In most of Shakopee.
Majority Shakopee.
But the railroad affects the downtown corridor more than anywhere else, so I think that it's a fair and doable thing to have, like, quality, like, promote the quality of life in downtown of downtown. Quality of life, economic development of downtown Shakopee, I think, uh, is more tangible, I guess? I don't know exactly what to say.
Well, there's such a carryover, I mean, if you're woken up early in the morning and can't get back to sleep, you go to work, you're tired.
Right.
You're not doing a good day's work, you know, you're not thinking straight.
So that is, that's why I said livability and.
Livability.
But on the other side of one sixty-nine, it's probably not an issue as much, because you're getting the noise off the highway, you probably don't hear the trains.
I, I hear the train. I live by the hospital, I still hear it, but, I mean.
I live at Third Avenue.
Yeah, it's just, I think it's just how much of it you hear.
Right.
Yeah.
Obviously, you're getting more downtown than.
As you look at, you've got a quality of life issue that impacts a majority of Shakopee, and your overriding goal would be to enhance livability. Is that something that seems critical?
Really, really, the, the hierarchy issue is, the more of these things that you try to do, the more it costs, and the more you tax people, and the, the more out of their pocket harms their quality of life.
That's what we're gonna get to next, okay, now.
But it does increase their property value.
There's a trade-off, which makes them pay more taxes, which takes money out of their pocket, which makes their quality of life go down.
But you've just done the perfect segue here, Matt. So, that is then, council plans to implement this as a reality, how? Now let's work through. And how do you prioritize those actions to accomplish this, to get this policy in place?
Let's charge a railroad what it costs to get a quiet zone for using our right of way. That's a good place to start.
Well, you know better than most that how that'll go.
Well, right.
So if we had to be, and we have to remove ourselves from the perfect world, in the world that we now know, what would be a methodology that as a council, you could move forward to make this a reality?
Well, are we talking just railroad, or are we talking the downtown livability?
I think you're talking a bigger quality of life issue. What are the, what are the bigger picture aspects of, as a council? If you wanna make these quality of life issues a high priority?
Well, one of them would be to start discussions with the railroad, because until we start talking to them, we're not gonna get anywhere. Not that, we may not get anywhere anyway, because their feet are pretty much locked in cement.
So taking that up a higher level, 'cause I'm trying to keep you bigger level.
I, I think even more than before that, you'd wanna start doing some studies of, you know, how it's gonna affect the people that live on Second Avenue, 'cause I think most of those streets will have to be closed, at least, uh, from crossing.
So what you're looking for is a effective communication planning.
Planning.
No, I think, I think we're going at it backward. Before you're gonna spend money doing a study, you need to find out from the railroad what exactly it is that they're gonna request us to do, and then see if there's the stomach to do that.
Well, I think some of it's known.
Effective communication planning. You have to figure out who to talk to, when, and how.
If you start closing a bunch of accesses on the railroad, you've changed your traffic patterns all over town.
But we know that that's part of it.
Well, and we've been through that study once already, and it's, it's pretty, pretty drastic.
Mm-hmm.
If we could, we, we've, we've looked at specific crossings and that, but if you close several crossings, does that increase the ability to get a quiet zone? We also have just completed, uh, the First Avenue study. That's gonna be coming before you, probably next month. Is that something that needs to be tied in with the railroad study as well? That talks about the whole downtown livability thing, Mike, that you were looking for. So, um, that might be a way to get started, to first define what your, uh, parameters are. Is it just gonna be Second Avenue? Is it going to be everything that's impacted by the, uh, train noise and traffic patterns? Because you're gonna be seeing that pick up with First Avenue with the bridge being redone, starting next year.
And if you don't have the crossings from this part of town down here, now you have a destination-only First Avenue, which is gonna have to come through Marshall Road sixty-nine, and that's gonna be tied up from the river crossing. So the, the transportation piece of it is extremely important.
Okay, this is where I'm gonna pull us out a little bit, because we are, policy talking about is livability of downtown Shakopee. Railroad and quiet zone is part of how we make a reality for what we want to see happen. So we don't need to get into the details of exactly how we do that at this point, we just need to talk concept.
Because I think.
See where we're going.
You've hit it right on the head. This isn't the night we're going to be bringing forward all the tasks. You start here and you're overriding policies. You then, at your next council meeting, take a look after tonight's discussion and say, yeah, I agree with those. After that, you go forward and start meeting with your other groups, and I guess that's the question that I would have is, who do you foresee as the other groups, as you are developing council policies, that you wanna get input from? And then at a point after that, meeting with staff, other intergovernmental groups, and saying, these are where we see our policies. Now let's talk about the tasks and who does what.
Right. And as, sorry, I was just gonna say, and with the tasks, that we're gonna talk about the overriding policy pieces tonight and get a few of them set forward, and then in possibly April, or sometime in the next few months, we're going to, staff will come back to us with a list of tasks and projects and things like that that we can begin to work on, and exactly like you talked about, Matt, we obviously can't do everything all at once, and so we need to prioritize things and say, this is the way we can get X, Y, Z done, and all of that, those tasks and those, uh, projects that come from this overriding policy will then start to feed into our budget over time. So we're really talking twenty fifteen projects for the most part here. Um, and if, if that's what we want to do, so we're starting the groundwork, laying the groundwork for those things now, and I'm not saying we don't start working on railroad things now, I'm just saying that we are laying the groundwork for future, so we need to think long range.
One policy, oh, was, uh.
I don't have a problem with quality of life downtown, being, being a, that we're looking at. The, the, where I get lost here is, is to, before I'm gonna support a quiet zone, if that co- if that requires the city to up the speed to whatever they're asking, forty or fifty miles an hour or whatever, and it's gonna break foundations and close off all the access and put sound barrier walls up and all this other crap, no, I'm not in favor of that. I would rather listen to the whistle. So until I know what's, the devil's in the details, I can't tell you I'm gonna support a, no whistle zone until I know what exactly it's gonna take.
That's why, exactly why we're not talking details tonight, we're talking policy.
Well, one policy, and it is kind of a, go into a task, is we've talked some about the Main Street program, and we know that that will lead, hopefully, into dealing with some of the economic development of the small businesses on the First Avenue corridor. Uh, as a policy, we could decide that that's something we wanna move forward on. Um, then that would be a task that they'd take.
You wanna promote small business? Pass a resolution at the city council telling the state and federal government to quit taxing them at fifty percent? Seriously?
Yeah, well, that's something out of our range.
But those are, again, are tasks, that go down to a level that, that tonight, in order to come up with the type of future plans, the guidance that you need. How do you wanna define, and I think it's realistic tonight, tell me if you can't hear me. I think it's realistic tonight to literally just try and frame in on a couple. And you brought up a very good point, Matt. This is fluid. This will change. This will not tie future councils or other groups to a set practice or a series of decisions. They simply serve as a consistent guide for what your future can make a basis for your decisions.
I think we need to set a, set some guidelines for tax abatement and TIF. Um, if we're gonna be giving this money, or however you wanna call it, to these companies, we need a set of rules that they're gonna need to meet criteria before we do it. Um, from my understanding, there's nothing out there right now.
Well, Sam's put together some, some pointing sheets now that, she's using, I don't think we've adopted it formally, but I think that's something that, I don't know if the EDA has looked at it either, but they could bring it back to us as a formal policy.
It goes to, it goes to EDAC this month, just so you know.
So what you're saying, if I'm hearing this and just reframe, you are looking for a consistent, I'm trying to find the exact words here.
Guidelines.
A consistent.
Mechanism?
Yeah, I think it's a mechanism or a consistent tool that the city can rely upon when making economic development decisions, or even broader than economic development. Consistent, a consistent series of practices.
Mm-hmm.
For community expansion? Do you wanna go that broad?
I don't wanna go community.
I, I think it would be economic development.
Yeah.
It's gotta be, it's, it's gotta be linked to the high-paying jobs, not necessarily expansion of the city. The, uh.
But that's inside the practices. Consistent series of practices for the.
Use of economic development tools.
For the use of public funds.
The concern I have with.
Yeah, broader, yeah.
The concern I have with tax abatement and TIF is that it seems lately that it's just a, uh, it's a norm. A- and in my mind, this is a last resort used tool. It's, i- if the economy is flying high, I don't know that we would be offering tax abatement. I wouldn't be offering tax abatement and TIF unless it was a super deal type something coming here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it's almost like we're looking at it from a mindset now that it's a permanent thing all the time, no matter what the economy's doing. Yeah, I disagree with that.
We're not gonna need to use it unless we put a policy in place that says we wanna start working towards developing a, a new set of sites for industrial, commercial, uh, development. So I think that might be one of our goals too, is to.
Well, we're.
Planning for the next industrial complex.
And, and if I can interject, 'cause I know where you're going on this one. And what we talk about here is the use of tax abatement and TIF, but we've also recently seen the use of Minnesota investment funds, which are funds outside of our control, or, uh, offering utility options of some kind. That's why I'm wondering, what would be, what would be a parameter here? If you have consistent series of practices for the use of, so you really can't just say TIF. You really can't say abatement.
Economic development tools.
Well, it's economic incentives.
Of.
Economic incentives, I like that one.
Economic incentives. Is that too binding, or is that not broad enough?
I would say public incentives, I think, would be.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, how does that, how does that framework into a policy? Is this something, as a council, would this be able to give you a guide as we go into budget planning? As we go into future, future debt planning? As we go into infrastructure planning? Would, that's, that's the key, I'm trying to draw you toward. As you start looking at the, the budgets, and you start looking at the planning tools, one of the pieces here is, I'm gonna bring you back to a time and place of which a few of you have lived through. You have a capital improvement plan that's presented to you. It's accepted. It's in the budget. We have the funding. Three meetings later, you have community residents show up and say, I can't believe you didn't bring this project in. Now you're presented with the question of, okay, do we add this to the capital plan? Do we substitute it for something else? What gets deferred? What gets put off? Or, as a policy, do you have the ability to make a decision as a council? How are you gonna do this? If something is going to be a priority as a council, are you willing to look at the use of different types of funding? Are you looking at intergovernmental relations to kind of fund some of this? You're gonna be facing a lot of difficult questions in the fifteen and sixteen budgets, because you're gonna be experiencing the growth you started to see in thirteen. You're gonna be dealing with a lot of the expectations of the new businesses and the new residents. And that's where I see, as you. And that's where I see as you plan these policies, where they are going to be so critical to help you make some of your policy decisions, to make consistent direction and advice to the outside parties, your staff, other governmental units.
I think we'll, well, I think we need a consistent policy for the use of enterprise funds for sure. And how we use them and how we um, when we use them. Does that, that's a kind of, I don't wanna use the word war chest, but that's a, that's used for, we've dipped into that a couple times, and I think we need a consistent policy if we're gonna do that.
I think uh, I think what you're, what you're asking, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're asking, and I'm gonna use the example that we just dealt with on a sewer issue, where it wasn't in a capital improvement plan, but a bunch of residents came in saying, our sewers ain't working. Um, if if, what you're telling me, if I'm hearing this right, is you want us to have a policy saying that, this is what we adopted, sorry you're not in our plan until three years from now.
Nope, that's not what I'm saying.
Get a BIS or something.
Nope, 'cause I I I personally, just from the history I have, that can be extremely damaging to a community.
Right.
So you wouldn't wanna have that.
And the problem that I see is, in order for us to know all the outstanding projects, we are now have forced a micromanaged staff, which is not what we should be doing. So.
Correct. That's where the policy comes into play.
Right, but you can't legislate against and create policy against unknown unforeseen. When when you, when we have a group of our citizens come here saying, our sewers don't work. What are you gonna do? You gotta fix it, you know? You know, can we beat up on our staff and say, how come you didn't plan this sooner? No, I mean, that's not fair either.
We could plan for a contingency like fund or.
Well, and and we we have that now because we've created our our funds to to be able to absorb some small little projects here and there that happen like that. So I don't know that we're far off from where you're trying to get us already. It's just not in writing, I guess.
Well, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure it is articulated in a manner that when people are looking at this community, when they come forward for issues, you know, you've seen this in last year with your economic development needs or your residential expansion or your things that will be changing with the schools or your issues that are facing your healthcare services. How do your cities' policies give them consistent information to understand where you as a city council, as your policymakers, where you are going to consistently be?
I would, my my big one is, if we're gonna telegraph to our community and and those that might consider coming here, whether it's residential or business, best thing I would like to give them as a positive is that we are gonna do everything in our in our power to make sure that our tax taxes are stable, that you're not gonna see spikes. And and to me, that drives businesses in when they can budget for ten, fifteen years out and look at our past history and say, you know, they are pretty stable. They don't have these huge huge spikes up and huge spikes down and stuff like that. And and I think there's some merit to that. Um, it also gives gives residential the opportunity to to look at moving to Shakopee, knowing that once they get settled in, two years from now, they're not gonna be forced out, okay? So so that's critical. And and how do we achieve that? Well, obviously, we already, we try to do that, all of us, I'm sure we do. But we try to make sure that we spend the money wisely and we try to prioritize how we spend that money on what's most important. You know, if we need a fire truck or we can't fight fires, we're gonna need a fire truck. Um, it's one thing to compare a a fire truck compared to something, you know, a trail is nice to have, but if you don't have that trail done next year, um, it's not gonna shatter anybody's world compared to not having that fire truck put out the fire or whatever the case might be, just an example. So when you prioritize what you're spending your money on, so that you don't create them spikes and you don't hurt people's quality of life, uh, that's important to me.
Uh, 'cause we rely on staff to, for the capital improvement funds to to know that in a ten-year cycle, we need to think of this in five years, we need to think of this in six years. So we're trying to do that with you guys. And so some of those contingencies should be thought of, but I think, you know, there's always those emergencies and things, so. So I don't know where we're going. Just talk, Mike.
I I think what you're going for is a set of guidelines that relate to an emergency situation. You have to meet these guidelines before we're gonna consider it an emergency. You know, like sewers backing up, you know, whole section of sewer collapsing and, you know, we have to move that project ahead. There should be a set of guidelines that says, you know, um, this is gonna affect so many people. The economic impact's gonna be this number, um, something on that order. I mean, right now, it's just spitballing, but we need to put something in place if we make a s- a solid set of guidelines so that they can come in and say, well, we meet this criteria that we can bump in here and, you know, you're gonna look at us.
You know, you just brought up a very interesting point on that. Because I'm not sure, I can just think in my history, I'm not sure if there's ever really been a specific discussion when a request comes in that follows any special parameters. Somebody comes in and says, we've gotta do this project. It's not planned. Okay, do you refer that back to staff and say, tell me?
Does it meet this guideline?
Right, but that gets back to, I'm gonna draw you back again. So if you were gonna develop a goal so that the community, the staff, the council knows what issues may be addressed or will be prioritized to be addressed, is there a policy that you can develop that gives you the guidance on that?
Are you getting at like a uh consistent funding mechanism type thing for capital improvement projects? 'Cause a part of the issue that we're having in my mind right now is uh, in the past, you know, six, eight years, we've known that this bubble that's coming up in the next few years has been coming. And we didn't put any money or as much as we needed to, money aside, for those kinds of things. Are you getting at that we have a council policy for funding the next?
Street overload. The street improvement fund.
Right, so having consistent funding mechanism for the next three years. So once we get to budgeting time, we're not arguing over the fact if we are budgeting five hundred thousand or a million dollars in our levy for those kinds of things, that this is, this is our policy that we're gonna budget for the next three years of capital improvements. And we are, we can argue over those capital improvement project lists, but once we get that list, that's what goes in the budget, is that.
That's it.
That fund is what we need, is that street improvement fund.
But it isn't just to the capital improvement. And and Matt, you made a very excellent reference regarding the equipment. Because there has been consistent funding historically in that equipment fund, we won't be faced with in our tenure here, having to say to someone, we can't buy the fire truck. We don't have the funding. We have had enough long-term planning, interest earning, structural uh replacement review to know we can do those things. You may not have that for every other piece of critical needs in your city.
Yeah, your equipment rental pays for that, but we've also, we've also have the ability. We've been very gracious in turning over our equipment very early in its lifecycle. Matter of fact, we shorten it up. We used to, we used to, we used to keep equipment longer than we do now, some of them. So when we turn over a piece of equipment, i- i- if if we had to, we could hang on to them a little bit longer.
Right, but that there again, that's kind of the discussion that we have when we do budgets between maintenance and and initial cost. But those are the minutia.
I'd like a good answer. Is it, do we have the uh, the street improvement fund is is funded every year?
Correct.
It's not built up.
No.
It needs to be ramped up on that. Um, I think we've done a good job through the street preservation policy that the public works directors brought in. We know what those.
Oh, you've got one. All right.
We have one, they just.
Know what those are going to be. However, uh, sometimes when you get to budget, it's, I mean, it's human nature as as elected officials. Well, we don't wanna go up quite that much, so you've reduced that somewhat. Um, and we've also had uh a good five-year capital improvements program, which then identifies where the sewer um relinings or replacements need to take place. Now, as you'll recall, this last year, we had a block uh of people that came in and said, you know, our our lines are collapsing. We need to get that done now. It wasn't ready to go for two years according to the plan, but you moved that ahead because that was an unexpected, that was an emergency. And whether we go back to, well, we gotta have, you know, eight out of the sixteen people on that block that have to have had sewer backups or things like that, I don't know that we're gonna reach that sort of criteria. I don't think that's exactly what you're looking for. You're always, as elected officials, going to wanna accommodate somebody who's got a short-term, an issue that's come up right now. Will you have to adjust other things? Because remember with the street reconstruction project, you as a city are still picking up seventy percent of the cost of that. Can we do that for everybody? Can we move everyone to the front of the line? No, that's where the prioritization comes in.
And what you said right there is a lot, I'm not sure if all those projects, but most of those projects that came through to us by petition this past year were previously on the CIP but got tossed back because they weren't funded. So if if we had as a policy for city council funded the CIP, then those wouldn't have come back to us this year. Um, and so I think that moving forward, that that is a good policy for us to have.
Because as we've just discussed, is there funding for capital needs? We know we fund the equipment. We have a good base for the IT. It's just starting. But when it came to your capital fund, twenty thirteen was the first year you had identified funding. Twenty fourteen increased it a little. Twenty fifteen plans for a bit more increase. So that by twenty fifteen, your capital funding will be one million. That is not a large amount of internal funding when you only assess thirty percent. Because as we've talked, and again, these are other policies to think through. There are communities that assess fifty percent. There's communities that assess upwards, close to one hundred percent. But again, those are all the kind of policies as you are working through all the issues facing you as a, you know, you you're in a unique city. You've got the older city. You've got the the city that's gonna require a lot more maintenance. You've got your portion of the city that was built in the nineties. And then now you're gonna have a whole nother new growth. So you're actually gonna have a series of three cities with multiple maintenance needs. What do you as a council want to develop as a policy? And Kathy, I feel like you've got so much up there and you're just not saying it yet.
Yeah, I think it's just, it's going back to um talking about that prior prioritizing. And if we are having to pay for the emergency, that part of that has to get put off to the next year or two. And so that's where I think that's what we're talking about, the prioritizing. And so that's where I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where we're at on that. You know, having not been on council before, where are we with that, how that's set up? And what funds we're taking it from and those types of things. So that's a learning process.
Which is where I brought Kathy in because there's a piece she and Mike can bring into this is they're starting new. When they are approached with issues that the veterans have dealt with before, how do they know what is a practice or a best practice or even a considered and developed policy? How do they know what those are?
The best policy now is I'll get back to you.
Right there, I'll get back to you. Okay.
That's better than some.
We'll get that, yeah.
I will say staff is pretty good at giving us the answers when we need them. But I think as far as policy, that's where we're kind of just going, hey, let's wade through this and figure out where we are and what we've done before and where we're going. So.
See, if it's, if it's roads, and I I rely on Bruce Lonie, our our engineer, to use his expertise to say, we're gonna do these roads, then we're gonna do these roads, and then we're gonna do these roads. And I'm relying on him because obviously he has more experience and expertise in that area than I do. And he knows the age of the roads. He's looked at them. He's he's seen how deep the cracks are and there's through the sub whatever and all this other stuff that he talks about.
Yeah.
But uh, for me to set a policy of prioritizing that, again, is is micromanaging his expertise. He needs to do that job and he needs to bring us the priorities and put them in the order based on his findings.
Matt, I'm gonna push back on you a little bit on that one because that's what he has been doing.
Right.
And it hasn't been always the history of this council to to do what he's said to do. And so therefore, we have some emergency things come up. And then he has been for a long time promoting and advocating for adding more money and pushing really hard to add more money into this street recon fund or whatever we're calling it, I don't remember where exactly we're at. For a long time, and we just finally in the last few years have started to do that. And you've been, you've been pushing back a lot because that is increasing the levy. So how do you balance those two things?
Right, and actually what I said, if we go back and watch your tapes, was that I wanted to see a consistent dollar amount every year. Instead of going from five hundred thousand to a million four, I wanted to see, let's pick a number, whether it's eight, nine hundred thousand or a million or whatever the number is. Make it a number and keep it consistent so that you don't have them spikes and peaks. What Julie would like to have, because she's a finance guru, is a pot of eight million dollars fall from the sky and put it right over in this account for the roads and say, we're in good shape.
We got you covered. Got you covered.
But but that's just not gonna happen. And we can't, we, you know, it's, it wouldn't be responsible of us to do that because it's gonna create a spike on the people and create a quality of life issue for them because now they're gonna leave the house.
But I'm also gonna say that I agree with you a hundred percent about Bruce and his, knowing his job and knowing what he's doing. Here's the deal. He's not gonna do it forever.
Right.
And so I think the policy is then, when that next person commit, comes in that isn't as up to speed as Bruce is, we're setting that guideline of, this is what you need to work on and these are your priorities.
Right, and what I'm saying is, how do we put in a form of a policy that to our next engineer? And for the record, it's an examples that I'm using, using Bruce. I think he does a great job. Um, so I don't want it to be construed that I'm I'm talking like he doesn't do a good job, 'cause he does a very good job. But how do we put into a policy for a next engineer person or whoever that says you will look at the the road based on age? You know what? We're telling this expert how to do their job.
I'm gonna interject something here, 'cause I always have to be the devil's advocate. Okay, you don't wanna get in there and you don't wanna micromanage, yet you wanna set a flat dollar mode. Well, what if, if by going with this flat dollar mode, you are on the other end deferring things to a next generation that's gonna get hit with a bill up the wazoo?
Well, and that's where you.
How do you develop that?
And and that's where you.
How do you develop that policy to avoid that?
That's where you have to prioritize between, do you wanna destroy the quality of life for the roads? I mean, you have to balance something somewhere. You can't just say, I'm willing to destroy everybody's quality of life, make them lose their homes.
And you mean taxes with that?
Well, if if you were gonna put eight million dollars into it in one year, you would, you would cause a lot of ripple effects on a lot of people.
But I don't think that's realistic. That's where we need to focus on. What is realistically gonna drive you? And then how does your policy framework that?
So now we're trying to build it up over time instead of all at once.
Okay, I'll reject it.
We could leave some, a percentage of that as an emergency fund too. That could either be used in an emergency situation or put back in the fund for the next year to help build that fund. So you say, all right, every year, we're gonna put in, let's say, a hundred thousand dollars. Twenty thousand dollars is for the emergency, and I know these are small numbers. Twenty thousand is for emergency use in case somebody's sewer failures and we have to change the plan all of a sudden. Or that twenty percent goes back into that fund to help build it for a bigger project in the future.
Or if it's not an emergency where like the sewer or water is busted and it ain't functioning, but they want their street redone and their street recon is five years away, but they want it done today. Maybe that's what the policy says instead of a thirty percent assessment.
You're getting there. That's exactly where we're needing to get to.
Yep, yep.
Okay, you got a good train of thought going here. Do you wanna take a five-minute break?
Well, you just said you had a good train of thought.
You got a good train of thought because there's so much percolating.
Let's wait until about.
Eight fifteen?
Yeah, I was gonna say eight twenty or so and take a five-minute break. And then come back and begin the process of trying to wrap things up so we can be done at nine.
Wrap it up. That'd be fine. So now, okay, keeping you going on this, 'cause this is where I'm looking at Kathy and I'm looking at Mike. You've come in and you're gonna be faced with budgeting issues and you're gonna be faced with project issues. And you're gonna be faced with coordination with things with Spock and the county and the state and federal projects. There's a lot of stuff that flows into this. So from a policy standpoint, and the veteran members also, how do you wanna approach this in a community that is going through a cycle of well-established homes, meaning older? Homes are gonna face their first bubble of repairs and brand new. How do you see the city and the decision makers developing a policy that is going to give you the guidance? that is going to give you the guidance and also explain to the community and the staff where you want to go? And this is where you talk.
Yeah, for you guys, he gave you guys an opportunity.
I was hoping veteran members would help you through that.
Well, currently, what, we got thirty-five percent assessment, thirty percent?
We have thirty percent.
Thirty percent assessment.
Of an assessment, that means typically the assessable portion and seventy percent is picked up by the city, which has to be picked up by what previously was not funded. It was kind of what you could roll out of the general fund to fix it.
And I don't know that we're going to get a lot of support pushing that up too high, but I think it could go up some, but I like your idea on, if it's out of the cycle and it comes up that it's petitioned.
And not an emergency.
Well, typically they involve an emergency type situations, but it's out of the planning cycle.
The sewer portion may have been an emergency, but the road was not.
Right.
Part of, if I could interject, just part of the reason that we're at thirty percent is that of course, we have to be able to show a benefit of the assessment, and if it's more than thirty percent, we can say fifty percent if you want to move things ahead.
Mm-hmm, we went through this this weekend.
Did you do, did you do section four twenty-nine?
Yes.
So there are, there are limitations to that. I understand what you're saying though, there may need to be some sort of consideration of a premium or something that if things need to get moved ahead out of line, to make sure that not everybody's just saying, you know, do me first, do me first. On it because that seventy percent, that's picked up by all the other taxpayers in the community who may or may not have issues.
If I could interject here, and here's my thought on this is usually if we have to do a recon because of an emergency, it's not the road. We could patch the road. It's usually the sewer or the water or something underneath it.
A necessity.
And them necessities aren't assessed. They're paid for out of respective enterprise funds, sewer fund, Spock and water or whatever, stormwater fund, which is self-generating through the enterprise. And what I'm saying is if they need their sewer done and they need, need it moved up, yes, it's an emergency, the sewer is, is not going to be assessed. But because if we have to redo that road, which is on the plan four years from now or five years from now or whatever, the assessment amount on the road portion would be increased. But not on the sewer portion or the stormwater runoff portion.
And I'm not totally sure why we're talking so much about the emergency parts because that doesn't come up very much. It's a, it's a small portion of it. What I'm, I'm more concerned about having a policy is the big picture future stuff that's coming up and making sure that we as a body are consistent in, and we're going, I think that kind of our understood policy at this point is that we're increasing the money that goes into that, which therefore increases the levy and therefore gets the work done. So we don't see the spikes that you're talking about, Matt. So I think that what I would like to see is a policy that is a consistent funding mechanism for future capital improvement or I don't know what the best.
Not just capital improvement, but your capital maintenance.
Capital maintenance.
Because you have not only the new capital, but you've got a lot of stuff that's out there now that is going to be maintained.
How do we put that into words that makes the most sense?
Okay, you want me to just start writing or do you want to help me?
You mean roads, maintenance, street.
I'm talking.
Sewers and replacing trucks and.
Well, and yeah, I hadn't even gotten into the, again, you're talking quality of life. Okay, then, go ahead, Mark.
One of your long-term goals that you look at every time you look at a council agenda is maintain the city's strong financial health. That's there. And what I've heard discussed tonight are components of that policies. Matt, you talk about the need to keep tax rates stable and down. We've talked about economic development incentives, which will grow the tax base and which will provide living wage jobs. That's something else. You talk about quality of life issues in terms of the downtown and is somebody going to be able to redevelop some of the long vacant spaces next to Second Avenue? If they don't have the train muscles there, you might be able to put senior housing in or something there that would again help to create livability and walkability and those sorts of things. So we can identify, I think, several different policies under that if you want to keep, again, the strong financial health of the city. We get down into details as far as, you know, what do we do for assessment policies and that sort of thing. That's getting down into the tasks, I think.
But you don't know if you can put a senior high-rise next to the railroad tracks if they're going fifty miles an hour wrecking up on Asia.
That's something you can't even think about.
Again, we need to look at the task and you, do you need to do a study first? Probably so.
Well, and just kind of.
I've got a question. As far as the tax rates go, I'm sure you've got this number somewhere. If we raised the amount by one percent.
Mm-hmm, or if you went from like, but we talked about this here, let's say you're at forty-two point five and you go up to forty-three point five.
Eight hundred thousand, isn't it?
It's, it's actually closer to five hundred and fifty thousand because our values.
I'm not sure what you asked yet, Mike. What did you ask?
Oh, it's the tax rate.
We went tax rate.
You have tax rate.
What would we gain, what would we gain by one percent?
It's around five hundred and, and it really will change so much depending on, and this is where I'm really curious to see what we come up with estimates from Scott County with new values. But here's another thing I'm going to throw out to you, again, devil's advocate. Don't just focus on your tax rate. What are the other things that people who come into a community or build a business in a community? It's your utility rates. Let's not be so, just focused on property taxes. How about your taxes and fees? Because that's a big issue and in Shakopee, just from what I know. Your utility rates are significant lower if you do comparisons than other communities. And taxes and fees, when you're looking at a policy, you can't, that's why you can't get into the minutia of just taxes because there's so many overriding factors here that come into play. And you've brought up a very good point, Mike, with this whole issue of, well, how much can one point bring you? And then on that one point, depending on the legislative session, what's that do to a home or a business? What's the tax rate on that? How, how does it all translate out?
But for, what I'm, what I was looking at is for an emergency fund or to beef up all these funds. You know, if you can put a half a million dollars, it's still, you know, obviously it's not a ton of money.
No, it's not, but.
But if you do it year after year after year.
And that's the policy. What do you, you got it. Man, you walked right to it.
Well, but then you're also going to gain on the interest or however it's, you know, so you got to put another percentage on that.
Correct.
So a small amount in the beginning.
It grows.
As long as we don't have to use it, we'll grow to be a huge amount, which somewhere in the future, we could maybe take taxes and start going this way with them because we could use that fund. You know, now we go up a little bit till we get to a certain point at a small, small increase. Get to that top of that hill, maybe we can come down or we can start using it for different amenities that.
Yes. So as a policy, I'm going to bring you back here. If you had to put C down based on this detailed discussion, can you phrase that policy for me? What is the critical composition of what you just discussed? What do you feel as a group you could cohesively back?
Positive future goal for Shakopee's future, a positive goal for Shakopee's future is to, uh, do we like the word consistent again? Consistently fund capital. What, what's the most encompassing?
I think again, you'd be looking at capital, capital and maintenance. Because it is both.
Right.
It's not just the new installation.
So maybe consistently fund maintenance of our assets, asset management?
Of your capital assets? Because there's a whole nother area. We spend a lot of time talking roads. We've spent a lot of time talking, what about your parks? What about your trails? What about your?
Consistently fund asset preservation type things.
How do you as a group, how, how does that encompass what you're thinking?
Well, taking back to what, what I was saying about the small increases, I'm going to bounce something off what the school board wants to do. You know, they claim there's going to be this small increase for this new high school that's going to be, how many million are they asking for?
Eighty-nine million.
You know, eighty-nine million over X number of years, it's only going to increase your property taxes as much.
Twelve dollars a month on an average household, I think it said.
Twelve thousand and twenty-four dollars.
Twelve dollars eighty-nine cents a month for average house, is that what it said?
Close enough.
Whatever, I'm looking at that amount and if we, yeah, we took a fourth of that and we got a fourth of that amount. I mean, what can we do with that amount of money?
Bingo. Consistently fund future.
You're not talking bond reference.
No, 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 never.
You just talked about.
Well, maybe, that's not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't totally rule that out.
Planning.
Consistently fund future.
Capital assets, what did you say?
I liked asset preservation.
Yeah.
I like infrastructure.
Asset and infrastructure preservation.
What about our, our park buildings are infrastructure.
No, but the plumbing going to them is.
We've got a park, we've got a park fund for that.
We can tweak it.
I thought we had to park, uh, the equipment fund thing that we got.
I got a park equipment fund, but consistently fund future asset and infrastructure needs, expectations.
Preservation.
Future asset and infrastructure.
It needs covers both preservation and.
Needs.
Expansion.
Like I said, we can tweak this, but what do you think? Okay, first run through, you've got three.
Whoa.
Let's take a break. Come back and chew them out.
Uh, entertain a motion to recess for five minutes.
I'll second.
Chew them all out.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mike.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Motion by Moco, second by council, loose, do we have a sec, uh, we have a, uh, recess for five minutes.
You're all over that.
Yeah, you, I've never seen you not vote for recess.
Well, I should go for a, for a memo to seven minutes.
All right. Seven minutes, seven minutes.
For seven minutes.
Any discussion, seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, pass unanimously, recess for seven minutes. Go back here.
Be convenient, we've got a lengthy discussion, just initiate the very first pieces of how do you want to start policy development for your future decision.
Whoops, excuse me.
Yeah.
There you go.
All right, everybody awake now? We have three categories that a lot of the discussion is focused on. One, overview quality of life. Two, consistent practices relating to public incentives. Three, funding future asset and infrastructure. Work with me, tell me how you want to devise of this a couple of policies that start the framework for what's going to guide you as council members, as decision makers, for your future work. Got those pieces over there. We got.
Is that, is that all we're gonna get, is that these three?
We'll start with three, unless you plan to get a full one.
Well, I just wonder what we did with all the other homework we had done, where, where that was coming and going.
It got graded and thrown away.
Yeah, tossed away and moved down the new direction, huh, okay.
Tossed away.
No, that, the, everything that we have, and we have, did we pass that out? We've got them here for everyone, so you can see what folks said, um, but those items are all very much encompassed in this, and as, this is going to be a long-term, consistent process, so, um, what Julie and I just talked about was that we didn't know exactly what we're gonna do over the course of next few months, if we wanted to have more policy discussions, or if we wanted to start into, uh, diving into the project-based things, and, um, so af- you want me to just explain now where we're gonna go?
Yep, yep.
Um, so after we get, uh, three policies up here, um, based on those three things that we've had good discussion on so far, we're gonna put those policies up there, and then, um, take, and, uh, now through, uh, the end of March, take public input, and, um, we'll have stuff on the website, we'll have, uh, information out there for projects and tasks that are for, that people want the city of Shakopee to work on and to work toward, so these are more detailed things, like, um, like a quiet zone, uh, and, and those types of projects, and, um, then give that to, have staff work through that and add whatever they think need to be in there that fit, um, some of them will fit within the framework of these policies, a lot of them won't because we don't have policies developed yet, but over the course of the next, uh, two years, we'll continue to develop policy, um, overarching policy that guide things, so we will, uh, take and get tasks and projects from the community, council members, staff, and, uh, take it through the boards and commissions that we've got, and have them give ideas, and then staff bring us back, um, in April by department, what, um, what they think is the, are the things that we need to be working on that not only fit these goals, but fit other goals that we've worked on, um, and fit these policies, and so we'll have those come through and, um, continue to develop overarching policy, but that will help guide where we're going for the 2015 budget, and we'll have those lists of things that we'll work on, it'll come to council, we can prioritize, re- redo that, reprioritize that list, adopt it, and then we'll have a plan of work that the city of Shakopee is working on, um, it'll be, like I talked about last time, a constantly involving document that as we finish things and as we move forward, then at the end of the year, we'll be able to say, these are the things that we got done, and these are the things that were accomplished, and we'll have concrete, um, uh.
Outcomes.
Outcomes, exactly, to show the public what we've been doing, show us what we've been doing, and take it from there, and all of these things will continue that are on the list that we put together, will continue to guide how we do that, and what, what the important things to work on, so I think we've hit, um, with these three things we've talked about so far, a lot of the different concepts that were in the, the, uh, list today, but not all the details by any means.
What's the numbers on the policy priority, where, how do these numbers, what do they mean, and where'd they come from?
Well, we were asked to prioritize.
So those would be those individuals priorities as they came in, not necessarily what, uh, the conglomeration priority was.
In this format, they don't, ignore it, they don't mean much, it just, uh, in, in this format, it doesn't really make sense, but this is not what we're gonna work on now, this is just so everybody has it and can look at it.
Cause these are things that were important to you, individuals, as they were looking at gearing up for this.
Right.
We can integrate a lot of these into these ultimate overriding policies.
Well, a lot of these override with each other anyway.
Exactly, and that's what's interesting, it's as interesting you brought this up, Jay, because had we handed this out at first, I'm not sure,
Absolutely.
it would have allowed everything to be broad enough, like what you've got up there now, it really seems to crawl back in, if you take a look at each one of these, they fit back into a lot of these categories.
These are more focused than, than the overall reaching ones.
Right.
And then, as far as following up at future work sessions, how do you see that coming into play?
I think that this is something that we look at, we talked about quarterly, I think quarterly is probably a really good way to do that, as to, in one, every quarter, our, our work sessions, we'd have another discussion like this, where we develop more policy and start to tackle other items, and we have big items that we can tackle, and this is kind of a, a ramping into that, I think, um, and, uh, I think that quarterly is a good time to go through, and once we kind of get this plan of work developed, that we can continuously reaffirm that this is where we're going and what we're doing, and, uh, keep looking back at that. Did you happen to bring that with you? The one, uh, never mind, we'll work on that for another day, don't worry about it.
All right, so, back to the drawing board.
So do you want two policies from each A, B, and C?
I thi- I think, as you've looked at this, you've got your very first one, where we started that discussion, kind of on the smaller scale, expanded into quality of life. As you've talked through these things, and you took a look at A, B, and C, what is a more articulate and, I guess, agreeable kind of a policy as a group, that you could use as, again, the starting point, everything we're dealing with here is starting point? Where we have said quality of life, majority, for majority of Shakopee, to enhance livability, if you were gonna put that in a policy statement, how would you phrase it? And what is important for you to say? Are you looking at something, just stop me if I'm going down the wrong road, enhance the quality of life for the majority of Shakopee residents and businesses to enhance livability?
Affordability is key for anything, you know, we, if we can't afford to keep the parks up, um, that's bad, you know, that's, that's a negative, um, all the way down the line.
Residents affordability or, or cities affordability?
Or.
Who's affordability?
Everyone's, because some of the park stuff, you know, if you, if you wanna rent the structure, you gotta pay a fee, you know, if you're gonna have an event there, um, all the athletics that are done in some of the parks, at the ballfields and that, there's a fee for the kids to join. Um, some of these fees, from what I've been hearing, are getting a little, little steep, um, a lot of families, you know, it's one place they're gonna cut.
So if I'm hearing you, focus on an attainable, affordable quality of life, for, is, is that real, or is that not?
I don't really say anything, though.
Yeah.
That's my point.
It's too vague.
Right.
Okay. Focus on or develop, or expand, or.
I, I like where you started with, with the downtown.
Yeah, no, it's just a start.
Yeah, with the, um, uh, with the, with your first sentence, looking at A, I like the, um, something I've been saying is support and promote economic development for downtown Shakopee, um, and that would, to me, encompass railroad, absolutely encompass, uh, affordability and things like that, but I think that, uh, for me, at least, I would like to see us focusing on the, um, as a city, economic development, what the future of that downtown corridor looks like, um, and how we support and promote that area.
Well, and part of that would be, do we stick extra money in that area now, so that down the road, we can gain more taxes from that area, and recoup what we put in?
Right, and I think that's one of the, one of the tasks or, or projects that go along with that overriding, cause I mean, that encompasses park and rec with programming and arts at Huber Park, that encompasses, you know, public works with plans for, uh, um, how, how we maintain the roads, and if we plow, uh, yeah, if we plow the trails in Huber Park, and things like that.
Infrastructure, sewer, water. Natural resources down there.
Yeah, I mean, it, what I would like to see out of a policy is things that go through multiple departments and can give a lot of folks direction, if I can spend my time working on this or this, this item fits more of our policies and focuses, the council has decided that, so I'm gonna spend my limited time and, and, uh, uh, resources on this item that fits more, um, things, I'd like to see that downtown be a big one of what we're, what I'm working on.
How about, again, correct, go in, develop a sustainable and affordable program for development of downtown Shakopee.
Create, it's, cause you used develop twice, just as.
Okay, affordable program for creation and creation and e- expansion of downtown, or creation and?
Stability?
Ah, develop a sustainable.
Enhancements.
Stable.
You wanna enhance, you wanna enhance the downtown, is what you're really.
And affordable.
My question is, how do we determine what that's gonna be when the market forces play the biggest role?
There is a role that you will play, just from your decisions and your policies, by putting the word out where your priorities are, that makes a big difference, cause it sends a message, as people are looking.
But ultimately, it's the market that has to do it.
Ultimately, it's the market, but that is with everything in this community, it is the market.
We can tell the market, we want skyscrapers down there, but unless the market puts skies, skies there, it's not gonna happen.
We got the support, if we're not gonna.
That's what I'm saying, if you send a clear message of what it is you think you want as the most overriding concerns, is it sustainable, is it stable, is it affordable, is it all three? What is it you want for your downtown?
Walkability, access to transit.
Future. Maybe you need the word destination in there.
Okay, so focus on the development of.
Or create a destination.
Uh-huh, so you have to have words that are pretty all-encompassing.
But don't we want a unique destination-oriented downtown?
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then that, that can trigger it, so do you want to, and maybe you don't even wanna focus, maybe it isn't the term you want.
That's great. Maybe foster.
Okay, okay, have people going on that, we're gonna get these, we're gonna get these action verbs, foster, the development, creation, expansion.
Yeah, development, creation, yeah, they're both good.
Foster the creation of. Again, let's throw out the words, stable, sustainable, destination, what, what, what is it as a group you could cohesively get behind?
I like to mine as unique a lot, I like leading off with unique.
I do too.
It was, it was, uh, unique enhan- uh, enhanced destination, oriented downtown.
Foster the creation of a unique destination.
Enhanced.
A downtown destination.
Or historic downtown, don't forget that.
Can't forget the historic downtown Shakopee.
Is everybody okay with the historic?
Well, and that's what makes it unique.
Yeah.
Unique, historic.
But as a policy, you, you know, somebody might wanna build something, but you wanna keep that in the guideline, you know?
Well, but there, you know, that might be the vision in your policy, but you've got things being built today that don't fit that model.
But we, we wanna create that unique.
So foster the creation of a unique, historic, and historic destination for downtown, of our downtown?
Historic destination.
Maybe historic downtown destination.
Encompassing, encompassing downtown?
Encomp- yeah, that's a good one.
Or including, or?
Do we wanna define enhanced and historic, we've got plenty of adjectives.
That's what you do, you got a lot, a lot of words there.
We're getting there, though.
But you are, that's exactly it, you are getting there, because that, to me, tells me something really important about what you think you wanna do.
And I wouldn't use downtown, I think, uh.
Main street?
Uh, yeah, cause the corridor, I think.
It's a corridor, it's not even a street.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's more than just downtown, it's broader.
Right, maybe downtown corridor.
Yeah.
Do you want a historic-themed downtown?
No, just, uh.
I don't think so, I mean, cause once you get out of your, the main artery, I think your corridor isn't gonna be as historic as.
No, it's not, it's gonna be hard.
But I think it's that artery that leads to the destination.
Destination, um, historic.
Why can't we just say?
Destination and.
Vibrant, uh, uh, active, yeah, lots more verbs, there are more verbs.
Foster the creation of a unique and historic destination encompassing the 101 corridor.
Encompassing, yeah.
Let's let it sit for a little bit?
Is that, yeah.
Let's let it sit for a little bit and we'll come back to that one.
I gotta write my notes down, you know, I'm gonna forget them if I don't do this, okay?
You've got new buildings on your 101 corridor that ain't gonna fit that vision that are being built right now, so.
Yeah, right. Well, not now they don't, but what about in five years?
They're brand new, they're being built right this minute.
But think about that.
How are you gonna make them historic?
Gives them a focus for the future.
Just a look.
This is where things may be going, think about that, but again, we can't control them, you can only control what you as a council do. Okay, so we're gonna come back to this, now. Public incentives, how do you wanna craft a policy that can be a guide, again, think about your budget, think about the other groups that approach you, think about the intergovernmental units you work with, think about the staff direction. What is a policy that would give them a clear message on what do you consider is critical for the upcoming years?
Pretty critical that the federal government doesn't default.
We can only control what we can only control.
Thank you, I'm feeling like a marriage counselor, you cannot.
You can print money downstairs, just like the best of them.
Well, if we had, uh, Shakopee bucks.
I, I think focusing on the vacancies, especially the, the larger.
We don't have a ton, yeah.
We had B, is that what we're doing?
We're on B.
Yeah.
B is consistent series practice.
Okay, cause we're gonna sit on A and percolate, let's pop to B.
Right.
Consistent series practice.
But when are we gonna use them?
For the use of public incentives.
It's usually when a place is vacant, when.
Develop, you know, we were talking about the scorecard, develop a s- a scorecard for, uh.
Cause that'll be one of the tasks, that'll be one of the tasks, well, what's your overriding policy to send a very clear set of practices that'll guide your practices, guide your planning, guide your discussions, what's that policy?
Whatever we do has to benefit the biggest number of people.
A consistent and benef-
Up, um, that's bad, you know, that's a negative. All the way down the line.
Residents affordability or cities affordability? Who's affordability?
Everyone's because some of the park stuff, you know, if you, if you wanna rent the structure, you gotta pay a fee. You know, if you're gonna have an event there, um, all the athletics that are done in some of the parks at the ball fields and that, there's a fee for the kids to join. Some of these fees, from what I've been hearing, are getting a little, little steep, um, a lot of families, you know. It's one place they're gonna cut.
So if I'm hearing you, focus on an attainable, affordable quality of life for, is, is that real or is that?
I don't say anything though.
Yeah.
That's my point.
It's too vague.
Right.
Focus on or develop or expand or.
I, I like where you started with, with.
Yeah, no, it's just a start.
Yeah, with the, um, uh, with the, with your first sentence, looking at A, I like the, um. Something I've been saying is support and promote economic development for downtown Shakopee. And that would, to me encompass railroad, absolutely encompass, uh, affordability and things like that, but I think that, uh. For me at least, I would like to see us focusing on the, um, as a city, economic development, what the future of that downtown corridor looks like, um, and how we support and promote that area.
Well, and part of that would be, do we stick extra money in that area now so that down the road, we can gain more taxes from that area? And recoup what we put in?
Right, and I think that's one of the, one of the tasks or, or projects that go along with that overriding, cause I mean, that encompasses park and rec with programming and arts at Huber Park that encompasses, you know, public works with plans for, uh, um. How, how we maintain the roads and if we.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, if we plow the trails in Huber Park and things like that.
Natural resources down there.
Yeah, I mean, it, what I would like to see out of a policy is things that go through multiple departments and can give a lot of folks direction, if I can spend my time working on this or this, this item fits more of our policies and focuses. The council has decided that, so I'm gonna spend my limited time and, and, uh, uh, resources on this item that fits more, um, things, I'd like to see that downtown be a big one of what we're.
How about, again, correct, go in, develop a sustainable and affordable program for development of downtown Shakopee?
Create, it's, could you use develop twice?
Okay, affordable program for creation and creation and e- expansion of downtown or creation and?
Stability?
Ah, develop a sustainable.
Enhancements.
Stable.
You wanna enhance, you wanna enhance the downtown is what you're really.
My question is, how do we determine what that's gonna be when the market forces play the biggest role?
There is a role that you will play just from your decisions and your policies by putting the word out where your priorities are. That makes a big difference, cause it sends a message as people are looking, ultimately it's the market, but that is with everything in this community, it is the market.
We can tell the market, we want skyscrapers down there, but unless the market.
Right.
We got the support of it, we're not gonna.
That's what I'm saying, if you send a clear message of what it is you think you want as the most overriding concerns, is it sustainable, is it stable, is it affordable, is it all three? What is it you want for your downtown?
Walkability, access to transit.
Maybe we need the word destination in there.
Okay, so focus on the development of.
Or create a destination.
Uh-huh, so you have to have words that are pretty all encompassing.
But don't we want a unique destination oriented downtown?
Absolutely.
So then that, that can trigger it, so do you want to, and maybe you don't even wanna focus, maybe it isn't the term you want.
Maybe foster.
Okay, okay, have people going on that, we're gonna get these, we're gonna get these action verbs, foster the development, creation, expansion.
Yeah, development, creation, yeah, they're both good.
Foster the creation of. Again, let's throw out the words, stable, sustainable. Destination, what, what, what is it as a group you could cohesively get behind?
I like to mine's unique a lot.
I do too.
Like leading off with unique. It was, uh, unique enhan- uh, enhanced destination oriented downtown.
Foster the creation of a unique destination.
Enhanced.
A downtown destination.
Or historic downtown, don't forget that.
Can't forget the historic downtown Shakopee.
Is everybody okay with the historic?
Well, and that's what makes it unique.
Unique, historic.
Policy, you know, somebody might wanna build something, but you wanna keep that in the guideline, you know.
Well, but there, you know, that might be the vision in your policy, but you've got things being built today that don't fit that model.
But we, we wanna create that unique.
So foster the creation of a unique, historic and historic destination for downtown, of our downtown.
Maybe historic downtown destination.
Encompassing downtown?
Encomp- yeah, that's a good one.
Including or?
Do we wanna define enhanced and historic, we've got plenty of adjectives.
That's what you do, you got a lot, a lot of words there.
We're getting there though.
But you are, that's exactly it, you are getting there, because that to me tells me something really important about what you think you wanna do.
And I wouldn't use downtown, I think of.
Main Street?
Uh, yeah, cause the corridor, I think.
It's a corridor, it's not even a street.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's more than just downtown, it's broader.
Maybe downtown corridor.
Yeah.
Do you wanna historic themed downtown?
No, just, uh.
I don't think so, I mean, cause once you get out of your, the main artery, I think your corridor isn't gonna be as historic as.
It's gonna be hard.
But I think it's that artery that leads to the destination.
Destination, um, historic.
Why can't we just say?
Destination and.
Vibrant, uh, uh. Active, yeah, lots more verbs.
Foster the creation of a unique and historic destination encompassing the one oh one corridor.
Encompassing, yeah.
Let's let it sit for a little bit?
Yeah.
Let's let it sit for a little bit.
I write my notes down, you know, I'm gonna forget them if I don't do this, okay?
You've got new buildings on your one oh one corridor that ain't gonna fit that vision that are being built right now, so.
Well, not now they don't, but what about in five years?
They're brand new, they're being built right this minute.
But think about that.
How are you gonna make them historic?
Gives them a focus for the future.
Just a look.
This is where things may be going, think about that, but again, we can't control them, you can only control what you as a council do. Okay, so we're gonna come back to this, now. Public incentives, how do you wanna craft? A policy that can be a guide, again, think about your budget, think about the other groups that approach you, think about the intergovernmental units you work with, think about the staff direction, what is a policy that would give them a clear message on what do you consider is critical for the upcoming years?
Pretty critical that the federal government doesn't default.
We can only control what we can only control.
Thank you, I'm feeling like a marriage counselor, you cannot.
Print money downstairs, just like the best of them.
Well, if we had, uh, Shakopee bucks.
Yeah.
I, I think focusing on the vacancies, especially the, the larger.
We don't have a ton, yeah.
We on B, is that what we're doing?
We're on B.
Yeah.
B is consistent series of practice.
Percolate, let's pop to B.
Right.
Consistent series of practice for the use of public incentives.
It's usually when a place is vacant, when.
Develop, you know, we were talking about the scorecard, develop a s- a scorecard for.
Uh-huh, cause that'll be one of the tasks, that'll be one of the tasks, well, what's your overriding policy to send a very clear set of practices that'll guide your practices, guide your planning, guide your discussions, what's that policy?
Whatever we do has to benefit the biggest number of people.
A consistent and beneficial development of a cons- of consistent and beneficial practices for the use of public incentives.
Are we considering now using public incentives permanently at all times regardless of economic conditions?
I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that broad brush can even begin to be discussed, huh?
Well, and on that note, there are tons and tons of projects that are happening.
That aren't taking public funds.
That, well, they all have public investment of some sort.
Because you have infrastructure.
Right, exactly, but there's lots of projects that aren't incentivized or have gone through us that are happening, um, all over the place, so we can't put that whole, all the economic development having a Shakopee is, some of it has incentives to it, a lot of it doesn't, and, uh. Like focusing on that is.
Our consultant said it best, and when he said Shakopee, well, not Shakopee, but all cities and municipalities in general when they're considering public in- incentives, have to receive a clear benefit. Or you're not doing your job, so that's, that's critical.
In this economy, the clear benefit for the ones we did were the jobs that we.
Right, but then you have to define what them job requirements are.
And we do, we do, that's part of our policy.
But I think what you're hitting on is exactly that, you've got that framework started, how do you make sure that consistently is there and improved? So that's the policy I'm looking for.
My whole, with this, this subject is, that I've wrestled with as we've talked a lot about incentives is there are two different ways that this happens, I mean, we have some projects that are, um, they're all high wage jobs, I mean, everything has to be a minimum fourteen fifty dollars. Fourteen dollars fifty cents an hour in order to get incentives, everything meets that, that is, to what you were talking about earlier, Mike, that is our criteria. We don't have other criteria, that is the s- the single criteria that we have as a city policy for how we or when we incentivize projects, is that, that base wage, not an average wage, but just, that's the basement that we work with. Um, but we could have, you know, three hundred jobs at fourteen dollars and fifty cents an hour. Or we could have fifteen jobs at three hundred bucks an hour, and that's all wage creation, and that's all those things happening, um, but when we're, we're talking about these kinds of things, what what do we really want to get at, do we wanna get at seriously high wage jobs? Do we wanna get at a, a niche of some sort where what we work on is focusing on more technology type things? Or do we wanna focus on high end manufacturing, or do we not care what we focus on as long as we've got high wage jobs?
Maximize the quality and the, and the quantity of jobs when we use those incentives.
I would, I would, I would like to see us move instead of toward the hourly rate, to go back to using that, the percentage over. How was that, how was that worded before, it was, uh?
Well, the percentage over the minimum.
Hundred seventy-five percent of something.
That's what fourteen fifty is.
Minimum wage, yep.
I'd like to use a percentage in a reason, I would rather use a percentage is because then as market things change then that percentage automatically changes right along with it.
Well, that's what we do, I mean, our, our, our policy is percentage, but that right now equates to fourteen fifty.
But you can adjust that, I mean, if the state or the feds change the.
Right.
Minimum wage, then you're gonna have to take a look at all of a sudden, now if it goes from seven and a quarter an hour to ten dollars an hour, do you wanna mandate? Then still two hundred percent, those, that's a task sort of thing.
But if we just leave it at a percent, you don't have to change it, because it's still a percent of that.
We still wanna, you know, we, we had the big question with a couple of these with, um, and I'll use data card as, or. Not data card, the, the data center.
Oh, compass, yeah.
Compass, yeah, so they, they didn't have a lot of jobs.
Right.
They didn't have a lot of pay, and they, they eventually didn't take the incentives, but, uh, um. You know, that wouldn't have scored well, cause it didn't maximize those jobs, didn't maximize that wage, um. It didn't bring all that stuff back like you talked about, back into the community.
Right.
Um, you know, like, even Shutterfly, uh, was one of the max, one of the qualities was they had all these part-time jobs and temp jobs, so people could take seasonal jobs, and that's a benefit to our citizens too, because they.
But, but the wages of them seasonal part-time jobs doesn't meet the requirement.
I'm not sure of that, I don't know that answer.
I mean, the four, four hundred and some full-time jobs might, a- and that might qualify them for that, but I would just.
But it's still a benefit to the community.
I would take the other ones out of the equation and go based on this.
That's what we did.
Yeah, but, but still there's a, another off shooting benefit.
I, I got one I wanna throw at you, tell me if this reads anything based on what I'm hearing you all say. Develop an environment that considers the benefit of potential expansion to the use of incentives. Just throwing up.
Could you read that again for me?
Develop an environment that considers the benefits of a development or developments to the use of incentives. Very vague.
So the benefits of the proposal.
Can be so many, spin-off businesses.
Incentives are based upon.
Right, spin-off businesses, increased market.
Well, but you can't prove the spin-off business until that's a fact.
But some of them can clearly come in with them, they actually can define that for you. There are some, some we know have no development.
I think, I think tax payment pay-as-you-go is, is important, because if they don't meet the requirement, you've got an avenue back.
But that's where, you know, considering the benefit along with the potential use of incentives. How does that flow into what you're thinking of as a policy?
Look, I think again, back to that quantity and quality of the benefit. Cause it, you got, uh, well, it could be a small quantity with a huge quality too, so I guess.
So what's wrong with what we've got up there?
That's what I'm asking, are, are you okay with that?
Practices for the use of public incentives.
I was kinda wondering that too, if it wasn't just.
Now we're trying to build into a policy, this is the goal.
Well, actually, that is a good policy, is.
We have a con, it.
Yeah.
Develop, uh, or.
Or follow a consistent series of practices.
And so there will, there will be a lot of little things that go into that.
Tweak this anyway, so just remember that.
Attract quality businesses. Maybe, and then that goes over there.
No, because that's subjective.
Yeah.
I think the goal would be to, uh, uh, economic enhancement, economic, uh.
Foster or?
High wage jobs.
What am I thinking of, economic expansion? Economic growth?
Yeah, yeah.
Practices.
Expansion, I like.
Economic something. Economic opportunity?
It's a good one. And we're consistently looking to the growth.
A lot of things, I mean, it could encompass the tax base.
Cause that would go here, and that would come here.
So you're saying consistent series of practices for the use of public incentives for economic, whatever you just said?
What did I say?
I don't know.
I said expansion.
Expansion, yeah.
I like focusing on jobs.
Follow the consistent practices for consideration of economic incentives. Now, do you wanna get as detailed as jobs, da-da, da-da, da-da?
I think, I think we do that in our, uh.
I think I take that to the next level, but does this encompass?
But aren't jobs what we want, I mean, we don't.
Quality jobs.
Do we want, or do we want tax-based expansion?
Well, I thought we wanted.
On what, what do we want?
I thought we wanted both, we wanted the tax-based expansion, we wanted the jobs.
You could do something as basic as to provide growth, and that growth could be jobs, it could be market value.
Growth, I don't like growth.
I know, so what's the next word?
Grown by ourselves without.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
To provide.
Well, I think it.
Opportunity?
Well, and, and I'm, I guess I'm going back to, to, to basically so that they can live and work in Shakopee, I mean, I think that's where we want those jobs. So we're not going across and paying for that infrastructure to.
Yeah, that's a good.
I like that.
To provide.
Opportunities to live and work in Shakopee.
To provide opportunities, there you got it.
And anybody that gets, uh, economic, public incentives, gets gravel roads, they're much cheaper to maintain.
Not over the long run there, no.
You just throw some gravel down.
Uh, lived on gravel road for a long time.
It's easy to maintain, you just don't like using them.
We're getting.
Okay, guys, rewrite this.
Holy cow, what happened here?
Bring it, bring this one in. Is this one a comfort, feeling good about this one?
Yeah.
I think this is, this one's.
I like.
This is the gold star, honestly, I think everybody's cohesively on this one.
Can I toss something out for A?
Something to that.
You can add and change and do anything you want, what would you like?
Back to the top up there that you were talking about, the quality of life.
Uh-huh.
Now, these things, we're doing these things because it's supposed to improve your quality of life, right?
Yep.
So.
Foster the creation of a unique and historic down- destination for expansion of the quality. You're in B?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I thought you had A.
If we're gonna do B.
Yeah.
We shouldn't be doing it unless it's, it's, unless it's enhancing the quality of life for the citizens and existing businesses.
But I think you're doing that by living, being able to live and work in Shakopee.
Cause that, that provides you quality of life.
We're doing that, then we shouldn't have a problem saying that.
So we should have a policy that says, all policies, we have one, we have a policy to rule them all, all policies have to improve the quality of life.
We can have a policy, if you wanna put one out there that says, we're gonna have this policy to wreck your quality of life, I'm.
We could, but what I'm saying is that, you're absolutely right, we should have a policy that all, everything that we do as a city council must improve quality of life of Shakopee.
And we should be able to define it.
We should be able to find it.
You wanna have as a focus in your policy development, quality of life, I think that's what I'm hearing. You really wanna overriding is what I'm hearing on each one of these.
So that'll fit into our.
We can craft this in, we can do this.
Alright, so I have a shot at A for us.
Okay.
To look at, so foster the development of an unique historic downtown Shakopee corridor as a destination for economic development and livability.
I like that.
I like that. I'm gonna rewrite it.
Does that pull in what you were thinking, Mike?
It's, it's most of it.
Yeah, cause that livability is a big part of it.
Okay, I'm gonna rewrite that back here, cause this is a new A, give me that again.
Liveable with the railroad the way it is, I don't know how these people keep doing it, and then businesses need people.
Foster the development of an unique historic downtown Shakopee corridor, are we okay with using that as a?
How about downtown corridor, cause these are Shakopee goals.
Alright, I just, yeah, fine.
Okay.
I like the historic downtown Shakopee brand identity, but that will work it, as a destination for economic development and livability.
As a destination for?
Economic development and livability. I was thinking of the economic development, do we need to make that more small business, community business?
It sounds like we're hard up for somebody to come in and build something.
Right, and I don't want it to sound.
No.
No.
We're in great shape.
No, but I mean downtown, we, we do need people to come down.
So more for community businesses and livability, or is that something that we wanted to push that direction, or is that too limiting?
No, I think it's broad, I mean, livability could be walkability, livability could mean.
It is such a good definition of, I think, what the quality of life discussions you keep having goes right back here.
So I'm mo- I'm mostly questioning the economic development portion of that, if that's the right words or if that's okay.
Or.
Okay.
Is that too defined when you say economic development, or is it too broad?
It sounds like we are, it just sounds like we're hard up for something to happen in certain locations, and I don't want that to be the case.
Maybe local business?
How about economic growth and livability?
Viability and livability.
Ah, I like the viability.
Economic viability.
Includes economics, but includes.
Take out the development and use what word?
We're, we're already viable, so.
Economic.
Wanna stay that way.
Right.
And you can make it more viable by diversifying what you have down there.
Fostering the development of viability.
But we're already.
Find me a word.
In my opinion.
What was the word you had in Mark?
Viability.
Viability. We're open, tell me where you're gonna go.
As it is, um.
Economic viability.
Where's the crowd?
Put it in parentheses above it, we can.
How about if we do, economic development viability?
Kristen when we get done and she'll put it in something.
She'll make it make sense.
That's kinda what we're hoping, okay, there's your rewrite of A, you've got B.
Right.
Where do you see C?
Create and consistently fund. Infrastructure.
Funding mechanisms.
Mechanism, yeah, funding mechanism.
How does that sound, do you want me to write that one, create and consistently fund?
Consistently fund, uh, infrastructure.
And asset.
Yeah.
Programs.
Funding mechanisms, yeah, use funding.
Plan for.
Okay, shoot this at me again, where's the first one go?
Plan for and consistently fund. Infrastructure and asset, uh, mechanisms, well.
And consistently fund.
Let's get rid of the consistently part.
Okay, plan for.
Ties the other councils.
Well, no, because we might be able to come up with ideas that don't require consistent funding.
But those ideas would consistently fund them.
Let's say we hypothetically took a bunch of bonds that we currently hold and refinanced them with a little extra for a road project and some banked at today's rates, knowing that the future interest rates are going up.
That's still a fun though, I mean, that's still funding it.
You're, you're kinda doing it.
I see what you're saying.
Okay, so you're, uh.
To me, the consistently is the key in this.
So we don't have the spikes.
I think, I think by, by funding it, I think, I think just funding it is.
Adequately fund?
Saying what has to happen.
Okay.
Okay.
You know.
So just leave it as fund.
So if we put plan for and adequately fund, consistently fund, simply fund?
Plan for and fund future asset and infrastructure needs.
Fund, okay, let's try this again, plan for and fund.
Infrastructure and asset.
That doesn't, uh, needs, it gives you all kinds of ways of doing it.
Do we need asset and infrastructure, or is it just asset? Okay.
Assets probably more encompassing.
Yeah.
That, so.
Or asset.
Probably don't need to do infrastructure.
I think infrastructure is clear to the general population about roads and things like that, assets they like, what is an asset?
So do, i- infrastructure and asset maintenance and expansion?
No, because expansion pays for itself, we're talking about recons, we're talking about taking care of what we already own.
Expansions don't always pay for themselves, when you are building a new park, when you're developing trails. How do you pay that? That's the funding.
The state statue on parks was designed so that they fund themselves.
This to me, and I, this to me is guaranteeing that if we build it, we're going to maintain it into perpetuity, I mean, we're never.
Correct, you're not going to build it and then watch it decline.
Take it away, or we're gonna maintain it, and that's what this is saying to me, not that we're gonna create new, um. And we could have a policy that says we're gonna create new, it needs to pay for itself, or whatever that could be.
Plan for and fund infrastructure and asset programs.
This was, this discussion was based around the road bubble, so it needs to be focused on that.
But it could be trails, and it could be sidewalks and.
Yeah.
Well, I think if we've, if we had the, the road bubble.
Uh-huh.
If we planned for it and funded it, I think the other issues would be much easier to manage.
Absolutely.
So, so this in my mind is, is strictly about the road preservation recon bubble.
Okay, so plan for and fund infrastructure and asset plans and programs, or just programs, or?
Programs, it sounds funny to me.
Um.
I like maintenance needs. Is that not, why don't you like needs?
No, that's ex- no, that's exactly what you're trying to do, you've got, you've got anticipated needs that you have to fund.
Right.
Even unanticipated needs.
Correct.
Right.
Plan for and fund infrastructure and asset needs.
Needs, yep, that's it.
Let's not beat this one, cause it's pretty, I think everybody's pretty much on the same page on here.
So we don't have any maintenance in there?
Because needs can encompass maintenance.
No, because the, uh.
Yeah.
Seal coating and all that stuff that we do, that's, um. That's part of the ins- infrastructure and asset maintenance.
So as a council, are you okay with this, is this a base, is this a start, is there issues here that you have real concerns with, are there things that have never been addressed that we haven't gotten to yet, cause we can expand on this, but this is the core as you look ahead. How does this feel?
The starting point.
I'm still on my first, uh, paragraph.
Uh-huh.
How does this impact the average household or business, because without them here, we're in trouble.
Mm-hmm.
And if we force them out or make people close their businesses, we're working against ourselves. We're trying to get businesses in here, if we tax them out of here, then we have to work harder to get them back in here.
Right.
So we don't want. We're trying to get businesses in here, if we tax them out of here, then we have to work harder to get them back in here, so we don't wanna be working against ourselves.
No, and that's, that's where, again, when you have the policies that, and I think that if I look at this, my read on this is you as a group look to the consideration of not just one economic entity or one social group. You've got a pretty all-encompassing set of policies here, that you can use as a tool as you go forward, and, and with that consideration where you are concerned about this quality of life, that's your driver up there, you've got that recognized.
Yeah, I think this is the whole thing, huh?
That is, that's it right there.
Taxes and parks and roads.
Right.
You know, we should probably have this work session with the other levels of government.
That'd be interesting.
Other, what others are there below, so we have any ruling?
I would say any of that would listen, but that, that's why we're here alone tonight.
But we have an audience.
There it is, alright, so, this is-
Okay, this is round one.
Yeah, thank you very much, Julie.
This is gonna come out, we'll put follow-up, is there any other comments, anything else before we wrap this out and go into the closed session?
Great job. Right. So before we go closed session, is there any way that when we come through this, the next time where we start doing more policy things like this, that this can be an easier process to have, is there ways that we can improve this process so we don't talk for two hours and come up with three things, so we can be more efficient with this process? Is, is there a way where we can come with some beginning notions and have, if we wanna talk about, uh, what are some of the other major things on there, like uh, one thing that Julie and I discussed a little bit today is a lot of these, in this list, kinda go to performance-based projects and see how we are performing as a city on whatever that, uh, matrix could be. If that's one thing that we want to have at a next one, if we wanna have a policy for how we grade ourselves and how we're doing as a city, or, or something like that, do we wanna just come and see what comes out of our discussions, or do we wanna have, give each council member a couple topics that we want to get moving on and get policies, or do we wanna have staff say, these are the next pressing things that we would like to have council's direction on, what, how do we make this process work better?
I think if we get a copy of A and B, we get a chance to look at them over the next two weeks, we can jot down whatever we think needs to be added or subtracted, we boil that down at the next one, and uh-
What do you mean, a copy of A and B?
When we put our three major policies together, uh, those, those will be out tomorrow.
They're redrawn.
Oh, got it.
I think we need to grind, grind this out to come to consist, uh, you know, consistent views and right collaboration, so.
I'd like to see, maybe have uh, staff at our next one have a item they'd like to see us discuss, discuss one item.
Yeah, yeah.
No, just staff in general.
Staff as a whole?
Are you loo- are you looking for staff to suggest tasks to support the policies?
Not yet.
Well, that's, that for, for developing our plan of work, yes, we absolutely want staff to develop the tasks to start meeting these policies, and whatever else each department is doing on, is working on, to develop that plan of work that we're gonna get put together, so that we can show this is what we're working on, and then we're never gonna have all the policies that we'll need to in place before we do that, so we need to kind of have that happening at the same time.
It is a fluid document.
Yeah, exactly, and so, I think that um, for the April meeting, we'll want, and Mark, we can go through this, we'll need to have each department give their projects, and we can help prioritize those, and if they're things that we can work on this year, go for it, if they're things that need to be in the twenty-four, fifteen budget, that's the way we need to go, um, and get those types of things put together, but for this larger policy discussion that we need to continue to have and continue to work on, um, I love your idea, Matt, of having staff say, this is a good thing that we need direction on from council, who, and then we can come and talk about it and develop policies that
One per workshop shop.
Oh, yeah.
One.
The reason I say that is because then I would like to see maybe each one of us have one, and then we can sit here, we can deal with staffs, and then we can decide as a group which one of ours we wanna tackle next.
Mm-hmm.
Cause one of the things I would like to see us look into is, how do we go through some of the city code and clean it, we've talked about this. You should be able to wash your car on a beautiful sunny day without being able to get a ticket.
Right.
Should be able to do it on a rainy day too.
Well, if that floats your boat, I guess you should.
Right.
Um, and currently you c- you can't.
And is fascinating and timing-wise as this sounds, I actually have a proposal on my desk from a gentleman at the league named Luke Addicks, guru of city codes, cause this is a high priority.
You know, and I understand city code.
Where are you coming from with, what you, why is it such a high priority, I guess, I understand where I'm getting it from.
I think it's very hard to go into our city code right now and really find something.
You're talking the website format?
Website, even uh, staff-wise, but to even be sure, okay, what am I looking at, and is this updated, is this where it should be? How do we know this is in the year twenty fourteen, this is where it should be, and should it even be in here?
That sounds like a whole committee or commission.
It's, um, that's why I've got, that's why I've got this group out of the, of the league.
That's what, pass orders. Mark is panicking over there.
Yeah.
Um, I, I remember the last time we had a task force to look at the development chapter, chapter eleven.
Yeah.
It took two years.
Right.
What she's gonna recommend is that we have a professional come in and look at several years of council actions that need to be codified into the document. Once that gets done, then probably it, it would make sense to have a review committee to look at that, but to actually get into the weeds, you're let's just say if you get volunteers for that, they're gonna be very patient, very dedicated people in order to get this done in a reasonable amount of time, so.
Do we have a searchable version of that?
We've got a lot of work that needs to be done on the city code.
There's so much work, but I totally understand what you're saying, Matt, because-
Two and a half years it took me to change the city code to allow you to have a remote car starter in Shakopee.
There's so many little incremental pieces of this that I-
You know, I understand where you're going, that we need to do it precisely, but say the people that we just eliminated the three groups of, if they would wanna volunteer for this, they could just go through and just highlight the worst ones, and we could look at them, you know, bring them out in a sheet and, you know, we all get a scorecard and say, okay, yeah, I don't like this, 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 we do away with them, per someone reviewing the fact that, what happens if we do, do away with them.
Yeah, the legalities of can you do this through codification.
Something we're not seeing.
But it is definitely in, as Mark knows, my mom's a whiteboarder, that's a simple one.
I'm not talking about getting rid of
No.
reasonable legitimate city code.
But just to go through and really look at it, cause it's been many years since it's been done, it's time to do it.
It's a bigger issue than, I mean, we don't need to license dance halls anymore, I know what you're talking about there, but we need to get a functional I mean, really a document that's up to date, cause it has not been updated in several years.
Well, just to help me feel better, there's a lot of communities right now that are looking at this because one, you're having a lot of transition in city clerk departments across the state, and as part of the city clerks conference this year, it's one of the key topics because so many cities are looking at this.
So, and so much of this stuff is open to interpretation, you know, weeds and flower gardens in the code.
That's right. We got it.
What's a weed, how high is it gotta be, how many?
Are you trying to take my chief weed inspector's title away? What's the matter with you?
He gets a hat.
Yeah, I used to have that job.
We don't allow weed killers, so get out there and pick it up.
Right, exactly.
We'll bring more information to that.
Okay, that helps, yes.
Okay, so we understand, and we're ready to roll forward, I really appreciate your cooperation and your participation tonight, this was very well, very well.
Your guidance has been very good.
I appreciate it.
Well done, alright, um, with that, now we need to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session?
You got a second?
I'll second.
For the purpose of discussing labor negotiations under statutes-
Pursuant?
Pursuant to, we'll fill that in, okay.
Pursuant to Minnesota statute section thirteen D point oh-three.
You accept that, Council Mofo.
I accept.
Any discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, passed unanimously, we are into closed session.